Good evening. Welcome to the Ojai City Council Planning Commission Joint Meeting, February 14th, 2014. Roll call.
Commissioner Nolan?
Here.
Commissioner Merk?
Here.
Chair Nicklin?
Here.
Commissioner Becker?
Here.
Commissioner Crabtree?
Here.
Commissioner Foster?
Here.
Commissioner Osborne? Councilmember Blatz?
Here.
Councilmember Clapp?
Present.
Councilmember Laura?
Here.
Mayor Protemp Smith?
Mayor Strobel?
Present.
Okay. Pledge of Allegiance. And Mr. Merk, Commissioner Merk, would you lead us in the pledge?
(inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll open the workshop session. Does staff have any comments before we begin?
Well, I think we'd like to comment on each item as it comes up. So, the first item is the height limit, and we can go ahead with that if you're ready.
Okay. Then the solar height limit.
Solar height limit, yes. As the council and commission know, we've issued a notice to all residential properties in the city announcing our intent to consider a solar height limit, among other things. And so, we wanted to give you a brief demonstration of what the solar height limit, how it works. And so, my very able assistant, Amber Young, has put together these toys for me to play with, and I hope to succeed. So, the lamp represents the sun at the winter solstice. So, the sun is at a 30-degree angle over the horizon at its lowest point, which we just experienced about a month ago. And in this example, we have two homes that are next to each other, one of which has a solar panel on the roof. And you can see at the one-story configuration, at winter solstice, the sunlight shines on the solar panel. Now, if this homeowner in the larger house wanted to add a second story over the entire length of the house, you can see that it would block the solar panel, and the recipient would no longer be able to generate electricity. With the solar height limit, they can still add some on to the second story without shading the solar panels, but they can't cover the whole site. And that's kind of the general principle behind the solar height limit. The simple way that it's measured is, sun is in the south, shining towards the north. So, you go to the north property line, you come up 15 feet, and then you go across at a 30-degree angle. And so, anything that protrudes up into that limit would block the solar panels and therefore is not permitted. So, this is just our very simple demonstration, and we'd be glad to answer any questions about the upcoming workshop, which will be on February 5th.
Is that to scale, or is that a 12-foot setback, or 5-foot setback between the two properties?
It's not exactly to scale, no. But clearly, for example, if there was a greater setback between the buildings, you wouldn't cast a shadow on the solar panels. So, on a smaller lot, you're sometimes constrained, and you get stuck in a position where you're closer to the adjacent house.
That worked out really well.
So, we'll repeat this lengthy demonstration as part of our workshop. And then, we also are fortunate to have Danny Caddo, who is a planner from the city of Santa Barbara, and who's their expert in the solar height limit, attending that meeting to help us answer questions. We did meet with him before we presented it to the planning commission, and he's been very helpful. So, I think we'll be able to answer everybody's questions, and it'll be interesting to hear their input. Okay.
Councilor Commissioners?
Thank you, Amber.
She's probably sitting at her desk working, knowing Amber.
That really, it's just so simple. And it's so effective. Yeah, right there, it's very clear.
Anyone from the --
Mayor Strobel? I do have a question and request more. Commissioner Nolan brought a good point. If it's up to scale, it would be interesting if we could make a demo and kind of make it appropriate to scale to the houses here in Ojai, so we could get a better idea of what that means.
Yeah, they're reasonably close, but not exact, especially the separation between the homes.
I think I started, and she says an inch a foot. No, half an inch per, is a foot. So, you could extrapolate from this property line what a 5-foot setback is, quite easily. So, we could set these back where they were, right? And you could create a 5-foot setback with a ruler, right?
Right.
So, one, half inch, two, three, four, five feet is about there. It really doesn't matter, excuse me, it really doesn't matter, it's how it impacts here, whether it's a 5 or 12 or whatever, it doesn't matter.
Yeah, we can fine-tune the presentation, but really, the idea was to just present the principles, so it's understood why we're doing it and how it works.
I'm sorry, Rob, was that's February 5th, that meet?
February 5th.
And that's a public workshop?
Public workshop.
Just dedicated to the solar?
No, there's other items on the agenda as well.
It's part of the planning commission?
It is part of the planning commission.
Agenda, okay.
Any members of the public wish to speak on the solar height? Dale?
I was just wondering, what about tree growth, especially, you know, like if you have a tree in this, oh, we got to decide.
We, that's a good question, and we did ask the city of Santa Barbara about that. They don't regulate tree growth, and they haven't found it to be a problem. So, sometimes you'll have a tree that grows up and blocks part of it, but it doesn't necessarily block all of it all day.
Anyone else from the audience? Any additional comments on the solar height limits? Okay, shall we move on to item two, which is the planning grant?
So, Kathy, you want to take this one?
Sure. I think my first question would be, did everyone receive this as an email, or is this the first time that you're seeing it tonight?
I received it as an email.
Did it, did any, I'm not sure, did everyone have a chance to look at it? All right. I'll just give a, just a brief introduction, and maybe just open up a question.
Excuse me. Kathy, is your mic on?
No. But now it is. Okay, so I'll go back and repeat myself. I'll just do a little brief introduction, and then if it sounds like everyone has had a chance to look at it, I'll just open it up for questions. So, basically, two years ago, the Complete Streets Subcommittee and along with the city, applied for a Strategic Growth Council grant, and we missed the grant, which was just short of $400,000 by one point. And so, because we did so well, the Strategic Growth Council actually did a review process with us and encouraged us to apply again. And so, we are now applying again, and this is the third round. And basically, the grants are based on air and water quality, and includes things like housing, transportation, I'm sure I'm missing something else here, but basically, it's what cities are doing, or communities are doing to actually improve the environment, and different ways to do it, that's kind of an encapsulated version. So, we are basically using our same project summary or proposal for this grant, but on this round, we've expanded it just a little bit. Last time, if you look at number two, which has, describes our area for this comprehensive corridor plan, initially, we had an area that started at the Y, where Vaughn's Market is, that intersection, and it went to El Roblar. And now, we've added the entire 150, Highway 150 corridor, which starts at that same intersection at the Y, and goes to the eastern city limit. So, that's our, one expand, excuse me, one additional item. And then, the other item that I think is really important, we've also included the neighborhood planning, which, of course, you remember, the city council has allowed, I think it's $30,000 budget for us to move forward on that. So, that's included also. The grant, the application is due at the end of February, February 28th, and I will say, if anyone's interested in helping on it, that would be great, too. Our group, our committee size has shrunk. But I think I'll just open it up for questions, if you had a chance to look at it, and then I'll put it through there. Any questions?
I have a question for you, Kathy. So, if we received this grant, there's a list, an itemized list, of quite different areas where we could funnel that money. Do we have the flexibility to pick and choose, or?
You have to be --
How specific does it do?
You have to be very specific in the application process. And, you know, they expect you, especially if you get awarded the grant, I mean, you basically end up signing a contract that you're going to, you know, meet your obligation. And there's one other thing I did want to bring out. I'm working on this, you know, volunteering, so I'm really positive and hopeful that we're going to get the grant. But in the event that we don't get the grant, I really highly encourage us, the city staff and council and commissioners, to make sure that we move forward on the neighborhood planning. I think it's really important, and like I said, we won't know if we get the grant until May, and then there's this whole awarding process if you do get it, by the time you get the money and what have you. But I feel like we should start on that sooner, because we do have the funds. I mean, I would say almost every planning commission, there is some component that comes up, and we all look at each other, and we go, neighborhood planning. And that has to do with setbacks, building heights, and even the solar could actually tie into that. Street applications, in other words, you know, sidewalk, curb and gutter, tree planting, I'm sure I'm leaving out a multitude of things, but generally, oh, fencing walls, all of that ties into this neighborhood planning. And I think one of the important components of that is to, that we are going to include public input, and I think that's a good move in the right direction. So, thank you.
I do have a question. If you've, these are the items you're saying that you would like to include in the grant.
Right.
And I'd like to kind of go further with what Steve Foster was talking about. Would there be any requirement, if we were to receive these funds, to actually do these things, rather than, I think he's saying, can you pick and choose from here specifically, which I don't think will be any surprise to anyone. My question would be that we have under here, okay, the second one, reduce auto-dependency through rezoning and form-based code, the corridor to increase use diversity, development intensity for appropriate parcels to facilitate new affordable housing, new businesses, and enhanced services for seniors and the infirm. My question is, is this corridor, this particular corridor, is really pretty much by the high school and the hospital?
And also 150, so that would be starting at the Y and going to the eastern?
To the east end as well.
Yeah.
Okay. Because the only land that would be available for development on the west portion of that would be the infamous Cardy property.
Right. We've discussed that.
And would this be something that they could say in the grant, that you have to develop that property, you have to rezone that property?
No. And this is just a planning grant. So, basically, we would go through this whole planning process and get everything, you know, hopefully completed, and, well, I mean, we would, we'd have to go meet all of our deliverables and what have you. But, and then as far as implementing, then we would have a plan, so down the road, as we want to move forward. But the nice, well, one thing that happened on the last round, we lost quite a few points because we didn't have a housing element. That's where we really got struck down. And we have it this time, and so now, we're going to be able to plug that information into the grant, and I think it's really going to help a lot. So, and then, once again, the housing element kind of gets tied into this area of infill and adding housing, so it dovetails.
So, you're basically saying we don't lose the autonomy on, or autonomy about our planning decisions from this grant?
No.
Okay. Because we lose autonomy.
I have a question, Kathy.
Sure.
A lot of grants, they have time limits, and when you could, you know, to do things. Does this grant have a time limit?
You know, it does have a time limit, and I, off the top of my head, I'm not going, I don't want to put out a number, I'm not recollecting what it is, but for some reason, I thought it was about 18 months. But I would be happy, if anyone has a question, I can't answer it right now, there's, because there is a lot of information, I can either look it up, or I can direct you to the application, which will provide that information, so.
Because that would make you pick and choose, actually, when you're looking at your list, if you've got a time limit, it's going to?
We'd have to schedule it.
Vicente certain things, yeah?
Right.
Thank you.
I could add that one of the reasons we decided to go for this grant was because we wanted some autonomy, because we keep getting mandates from the state to do a housing element, to do new building codes, to do, you know, comply with new landscape ordinances, and we and the staff haven't had the time or energy to actually do the things that we'd want to do in our town. So, that's why we were applying for some resources to be able to do that. But at the, and at the same time, if there's something on this list that you don't like, you should tell us now, so that we don't put it as part of the, part of the application, because they will expect us to do these items. In our own way, but to do them, yeah.
And if you think of something later and not tonight, please, I mean, you can contact me or Paul, and then Heather Waldstein is actually working on this with us. But once again, yeah, we want to make sure that, and that's why I brought it up tonight, said, you know, everyone is in agreement on what we're proposing, because this is a city grant.
Mayor Strobel, I do have a question, and I don't want, I know we have other items, but last year, did you pick and choose which items you wanted to work with when you planned, when you applied for this grant, or is?
This is actually almost a duplication of what we applied for in our proposal last time. And once again, really, I would say the two main things that we added was, we increased the corridor area for the project. So, last time, it just went from the Y to El Roblar, this time, we've included from the Y to the eastern city limit, and then also, we added the neighborhood planning.
So, you don't have to pinpoint which one you want right now, you could just submit all this in the application?
Well, our intention is that we would be doing all of it. I mean, we'd have to, if we get the grant, we do have to, we have to do all of it. If we say we're going to do it, and that's what we want the money for, and they're going to allocate the funds, then we have to follow through with it. And, you know, we think we can, I mean, there's a lot more to it than just this, and I can actually share, we have to include an entire budget that shows, you know, how much time each staff member is putting into it, the dollar value, in-kind volunteer hours, if we have a consultant. So, it's pretty detailed what they ask for.
And so, it's due at the end of next month, and when do you guys meet?
Yeah. Heather and I have been meeting on Mondays, Monday mornings, next week, because it's a holiday, we're going to meet on Wednesdays. And then, we're doing some, some other work aside from our Monday meeting. And luckily, we put a lot of time in it to the first round, and that's where we're getting the bulk of our information, but we're having to update it for this new application.
And then, one more question.
Sure.
As far as the housing element, since we have to adopt the housing element, I guess in February, the second week, it's a deadline, will we have to put on the grant the fifth cycle, or is it the fourth cycle to apply?
You know, that's a good question, Rob, I'm not sure what the answer is on that.
So, we actually have adopted the fifth cycle, what we're doing next is implementation of it, but adopting it was the important thing for the grant.
Yeah, so we'll have that in time. Sure.
You said, you said that they will expect us to do it. So, I'm not uncomfortable with rezoning in here, because I don't want anybody in a timeframe in which we've accepted money in an 18-month period to come in and say, you've got to rezone. I'm just not comfortable with that. I want to, I want to have the flexibility for us to decide when we want to rezone, not because it's grant-dependent.
May I, may I speak to that?
Yeah.
My understanding is, this is a plan. So, that doesn't mean that we're, that the city's actually going to rezone. What the grant is to develop a plan. And so, if you look at number two, comprehensive corridor plan, so, so at the end of this grant, the deliverables will be, including number two, there will be this plan. Now, the city will then choose to do what it wants to do, but it will have this plan. So, if the city chooses to go forward, then it would have whatever process we undertake to implement that plan, or any parts of that plan. But what the "it" is, that we're speaking of, is a plan, and not actually rezoning. That would be an action that would have to follow, you know, city council and other processes.
Protocol.
Yeah, just to reiterate, that's very important, because that's, the key word here is planning. It's not an implementation, it's not an application of it, but it's really a research project, you know, and development of that, ideas.
Yeah, I don't want somebody to come in, who says, you've got this plan, and you never rezoned, you need to rezone now. That's my paranoia, is like, what about this, what about this plan, you know? You never rezoned, you took this money, you didn't rezone.
Well, the other part of it is that it'll be, the process is done with a lot of feedback loops, with the public, with the council, it's, it won't just be a consultant off working on a, you know, something and delivering it, and so, there'll be a lot of, a lot of opportunity for input on it, even on the plan part of it, obviously.
And that's one thing that they, even this round, more than last round, really encourage is public input. It's all about engaging the public and having them be part of the process, so.
Any further comments, questions from commissioners or council? Any comments from the public?
Hi, Bob Daddy, I'd like?
Mr. Daddy, would you come up to the podium so that you can be heard?
I didn't save this thing back yet. Thank you. Complete Streets has been running this, Paul. Kathy Nolan has been chairing this thing for the last three-odd years, and they've really done a great job. I mean, from getting Caltrans in, to walking the corridors, to doing the things, and I would say that there's been about a dozen people that have filed through this committee, some civilians, a couple of different planning people. But these two here, from the planning commission, the subcommittee that they have, have really championed this thing. And we have talked for about two or three years about the neighborhood plan, because the neighborhoods are all so much different, you know, as you see with that, somebody in a one-acre property isn't going to have to worry about heights for the solar. I mean, it's just not going to be there, where Fox Street, they're that close together. So, what I would hope that the council would do, and Mr. Clark would do, is get some type of a timeline, and with the $30,000 that there is a study, bring this thing into the next cycle, because we're going to have another grant next February, hopefully. Hopefully, we'll get this grant. But put all the ideas on the table for what the city needs for the next grant, because this thing's been kind of winging along without a real mandate. And I would hope that that mandate would be the neighborhood zoning or the neighborhood rules. So, thank you. And again, they've really done a tremendous job, I've seen them work, and thank you for the job you've done for a while, and we've had, like I say, a number of people come through. And it's probably time to get one or two more people, because the committee's shrunk down to three. So, we need some more outside people. Thank you.
Just a quick, I wanted to thank the entire committee, and Bob happens to be one of the members, but all the members of the public and the planning commissioners who have consistently shown up and participated and contributed. Thank you.
Any additional comments, questions? Okay. Then let's move on to item three, the housing element. Mr. Clark?
Thank you, members of the council and members of the commission. The purpose of this is just to lay out the things that we need to do in order to implement the housing element that we just adopted. And largely, that's done so that we all have the same expectations about what we're going to be planning to do. So, I've divided the housing implementation into three phases. The first phase is adopting some zoning code amendments, and in particular, the policy that we approved that implements SB 2 regarding transitional housing actually has to be adopted before the state would issue a letter indicating that our housing element is complete. So, we've timed this so that that would be completed at the February 5th Planning Commission and the February 25th City Council meeting, which is before the end of the 90-day review period on our housing element. But there's also a number of other changes, particularly to the affordable housing overlay zone, bringing that down to two stories and so forth, which we can do at the same time. So, we're having John Douglas, our housing consultant, put together a package that includes all these implementation measures for the February 25th, or excuse me, February 5th Planning Commission meeting. And then, their recommendations will go on to the council. So, that's phase one. Then, phase two, there were a host of ideas brought forth during the approval process to potentially change the second unit compliance program. And both our building appeals board and our planning commission have been involved and interested in these various components. So, we're proposing a joint meeting of those two bodies on the 29th of January, and we've put together a list of the things that we're aware of, and there may be others that come up at that meeting. But it's an opportunity to start seriously deciding where we want to go with the second unit compliance program. And then, that'll engender some follow-up actions. And then, phase three is really just a number of long-term goals that we want to keep in mind and do at the appropriate time. So, the first of those is documenting the development constraints. And throughout the adoption process, we talked about the need to do this. We think that it's, that the best timing is after the acquisition of the Golden State Water occurs, because we'll have more control over decisions that are made about water availability. And hopefully, this can all be done well in advance of the next cycle of the housing element, so it has an impact on that. The second item we have on the list is development of city-owned parcels, and we could begin working on that whenever the city council wants us to. But that would involve working with developers to see what's feasible on those parcels. A third item is the commercial mixed-use overlay. We have talked about having affordable housing in combination with commercial development on commercial properties. That's a concept in the housing element, but it hasn't been fleshed out. And I actually think, you know, if we were to be awarded the grant, that would be a good way to get into that particular project. And then, the final one is an overall general plan update. And that speaks to the need to have all of the general plan elements consistent. So, now that we've changed policies in our housing element, at a minimum, we need to go through our other general plan elements and make sure that the things that we've put in our housing element are reflected the same way in the other elements. So, these are all fairly substantial undertakings that will take a lot of work, and will have to be scheduled based on council priorities for staff and availability of budget to do the projects. So, that's our input on the implementation, we'd be glad to answer any questions. We'd be glad to answer any questions or receive any input.
Kathy?
I just had a comment. And this is under your phase three long-term goals. I did want to mention that the planning grant does include a general plan update. And I'm not sure if there would be overlap with this housing. It seems like there would be because the housing is a component of the grant. So it may be a way to, you know, have funds for a consultant because it would be covered under the grant, just that I throw that out there.
Any questions, comments from council or commissioners? I have one card, speaker card, Bill Wierich.
Good evening. I'd like, I'd like to just make a couple of comments, particularly on the second unit compliance program. I, I'm very much looking forward to the joint session of the building appeals board and the planning commission because there's a lot to flesh out and really think about in terms of the second unit compliance program. I think the, we've certainly, in the building appeals board, come to the conclusion that the existing program has many issues in terms of implementation that need to be addressed, that have a real disconnect between the, the policy goal, which I believe is to, is to use, and, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, to use second units as a, as a component of the affordable housing goals and the, and the design of the program, which doesn't, you know, is simply not consistent with that goal. We certainly can learn from experience from other cities. Ventura just had a huge mistake with being told that Title 24 compliance was necessary for non-conforming permits for second units and then founding out that wasn't true, that the state didn't require that. Our current, our current program, in fact, requires Title 24 compliance, set up for the same mistake that Ventura made. You know, there seems to be some lack of, lack of distinction between the non-conforming and conforming permits. There is inspection requirements there that, under the non-conforming permit, they were higher than the inspection requirements for the, for the, of the non-conforming permit, higher than for the conforming permit. So I don't, you know, today's just a, I'm just laying out, I think, the, the scope of the issues that I wanted to, to kind of, and I know that's what we're talking about today. To me, if we start with, with the whole premise that we're trying to use this as a tool towards promoting affordable housing, then a lot of the other questions that are listed here kind of fall into place. And I hope that's the, the logical approach that we can take. Other question, I noticed, I want to make a comment on HEIP three, the long-term goals on the, on consulting with the developers on the various city parcels. Become a little bit familiar with some of the parcels, and I have some experience with development. And I think if the city, the city is serious about actually using some of their parcels for that, they need to really consider maybe consolidating by maybe selling some city parcels that have real development issues with them, like slopes and things like that, and turning that around and maybe swapping out or purchasing a larger site that's actually more conducive to that kind of development. So I just want to make a couple of comments on those lines. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Anyone else from the public wish to make a comment?
Madam Mayor, I have a question of Mr. Clark. There was a great deal of discussion over Title 24 at the V-COG meeting last week. And Ventura was still of the impression, at least that's what I gathered from it, that Title 24 was a requirement. Are you in agreement with Mr. Wierich that Title 24 is not something that we have to be concerned about?
That, that's really a, a better question for, for someone else. But I, but I think that if you look at the property maintenance code, the property maintenance code deals with existing buildings. And we're sort of assuming that these buildings were built historically in the past and not trying to impose new requirements on them. And the property maintenance code doesn't do that. So if we follow that logic as the state has laid it out, I would think that the answer is no. If, if Title 24 was not a requirement at the time that these allegedly were built, that we wouldn't impose any requirement. And, and I agree with Mr. Wierich. Our, our overall goal is to make, make it easy to make these habitable places and safe and not to impose a whole bunch of extraneous requirements that would make that hard or expensive. So far, we've had, I think, five or six that have gone through the process. And those were, had very nominal expense and went quite smoothly. So hopefully, we can find a way to make that happen for more.
So we're not requiring any Title, Title 24 requirements when it comes to our second dwelling unit program now?
I think that Title 24 is mentioned in the guidelines. I'm not 100% sure how it applies. So, so the idea is to, is to change the guidelines to, to meet our goal of making it easier.
Okay. And where is that on our list as we go through it? Because it sounds to me like it needs to be taken out.
Yeah. So, so that's one of the topics we'll talk about at, at the joint meeting on the 29th. And then if the follow-up action is to, I think there's going to be a number of ways in which we amend the guidelines. And maybe, maybe addressing the guideline should be a higher priority than some of the other things that we want to do. So there's, I think, out of this process, there will be changes at the code level, and there will be changes at the guideline level. And the guideline level's a lot easier to do because it's a resolution rather than a ordinance.
Thank you.
Any additional questions, comments from council, commissions? Mr. Daddy?
Since this has been brought up, this is the appropriate time. We have a proposal for sprinklers. And that is going to show up later in this. I really think it applies to this second unit and, and the other ordinance. So when we can, I want us to discuss that because we're talking about making these things easier. And I want to make sure that if we had a home that was built 10 or 15 years ago and it wasn't required, that it still won't be required if you adopt this new sprinkler when they go to get the permits. I hope all the rules at the, at the time it was adopted are still in play because that's going to make a number of these things unaffordable, quite costly. So I would hope you would consider that. Thank you.
Anyone else from the public? Dale?
Yes. An elderly lady came into my office. Can you hear me now? An elderly lady came into my office about a week ago. And she had gone through the second unit compliance program, Aurora Holland is her name. She's, I think, in her eighties. And she came to me because I'm a notary. And she had a document from the city saying that there was a deed restriction where the owner of the property has to reside in one of the units, even if she sells it or wills it to her son. And she was very concerned about that. She said, "I don't want to sign this." But of course, she was concerned because she'd spent over $10,000 bringing her unit up with electrical work and plumbing and so forth. And, you know, she wants to be appropriate. But she said, "I don't really want to sign this." And I said, "Well, I don't blame you." And I see now that we are requiring, I mean, I have her, I asked if I could make a, a copy of it. And she said, "Yes." Her son called me the next day and he said, "We don't want to sign that." And I asked him to please hold off until we have some kind of reading on that, whether or not she has to sign it. She doesn't want to, but she doesn't want to be, you know, against the city policy either. She's concerned. So I hope we can reach a conclusion tonight about that or that, that kind of deed restriction is there, or any other kind of deed restriction. It's not state-mandated. Thank you.
Mr. Clark?
Yeah, actually, that's not something that you can change tonight. There's a, there's a requirement in the ordinance for all second units, not just those under the compliance program, that one of the units be occupied by the owner. And there is a deed restriction requirement in there. So that's one of the things that's on our list to discuss. And if we ultimately decide that owner occupancy is not desired, that could be changed by changing the ordinance. But it would take, you know, the process of going to the planning commission and then going to the city council to do that.
I'm assuming if we change that, that would be ret, I'm assuming if we change that, that would maybe be retroactive because we actually have a lot of second dwelling units that were built under that ordinance.
Certainly could be.
Yeah. We might want to consider making it retroactively not required.
Additional comments? All right, let's move on to item four, iPads for paperless PC agendas. Planning commission agendas.
So I'm, I'm assuming that this is a budget request on the part of the planning commission. And my intent would be to get the pricing and include that in the requested budget when it comes before the city council, and then you can decide whether or not to approve it. But if they want to lobby for this, they're certainly welcome to.
Okay, I'll start off, because I think I started off last time. We've actually talked about this many years over in the planning for, for a number of reasons, not least of which is we do get a lot of projects that are, I don't want to say they're ministerial general when they're coming before planning. They're, you know, they're fairly significant. But there's a tremendous amount of cost in duplicating plans. And sometimes we'll get the big plans across the entire commission. It's extremely expensive. The majority of us, like, you know, Paul and I, I think a couple others have iPads. The reality is all that information is actually available online. Sherry puts it online. So, you know, like Rhonda's agenda's online and looking, you know, I can look at her material here. The, the letters for tomorrow night's meetings are already here. So one of the thoughts we had was, you know, this is a cost that we don't need to impose upon applicants. We could have a standard of 11 by 17 for those applicants that do want to provide plans. In some cases, we might want to have plans where there's a lot of colors involved and it's a larger project, large commercial remodel. The planning commission might say, you know, that's one where we want to see at least a set of plans that we can pass around or two. But we, we talked about having a set standard for those plans. So, you know, you don't have to give us the one that takes up the entire dais to look at. You can give us the 11. I, I think you mentioned the, the standard size, Steve. That would make sense for those.
I had spoken to Ann earlier today, and she, and I said 12 by 18 is a standard size because that's half the scale of a 24 by 36 plan. So you can literally just scale it down 50%. You're there. The problem with 11 by 17 is it's too small. So it would require the city to invest in a 12 by 18 printer.
So the, the thinking is, is if we have some, you know, mechanical means, whether it be iPads or computer or something, we really don't need all this paperwork. And, you know, that, staff would not have to deliver books every Thursday. You know, it wouldn't take any of Sherry's time. It simply goes out on the internet. We can pick up our documents probably earlier than we'd get them. Gives us more time to look at it. But the idea was, you know, for those that don't have an iPad or something similar, if we need them, we can get a few of them and pass the savings on to the city and also to our applicants.
Any comments on this from the other planning commissioners? Kathy?
We actually discussed this today at our lunch meeting. And I, I think there's pros and cons. And I agree that, you know, we want to cut down on the paper use. And part of our discussion today was that a lot of us do like to kind of mark it up and make comments on them. So as far as the plans go, I would, I would be open to the, the smaller half-size sheet. A lot of times, some things are a little bit harder to read. But we also could use our own personal computers and access the 24 by 36-inch PDF and can scroll around and look at it that way, too. So, and I guess the other benefit would be that it wouldn't just be for the planning commissioners. I'm, I'm assuming it would be all, all the commissioners would be able to use the iPad if, if we did go ahead and use them. So it could be used at other meetings.
And on that, you know, if we did a certain standard format to be submitted in PDF or whatever, there's actually programs that you can use to mark plans up. And, and they're kind of nice. You can change the color and the highlights and stuff. So you could just load up that program on the, on the computer or whatever.
Just so I'm clear, is it, I don't have an iPad. I don't own an iPad. My wife does, but I don't. And, and so are we talking about one iPad or one for each commissioner? Or if you have one already, does it, do they differ and?
I, I'm assuming that we'd buy enough so that there'd be one for each commissioner to check out to them.
Okay.
And, and, you know, as, as commissioners roll over, we can trade iPads.
Madam Mayor, one of the things, because there's a lot of other bodies that, that we as, as council members sit on, such as V-COG or Gold Coast. And, and in talking with council members from other cities, they do exactly what you're suggesting. One of the problems that I have with it, and, but now I understand that there's some hot links that you can embed into the agendas, is that I would much rather be able to look at an agenda item and then turn a page and go to it and, and go back and forth. Whereas on the iPad, it tends to be a little more difficult to do that if you're just using the format that you get off the internet. But now I understand that, that actually Ventura that's using them at the city council meetings actually has links that you can, you know, click on here and it takes you to this page. And you can jump back and forth between pages much easier, so they like it a lot better. So my suggestion would be that we look at that kind of a software implementation, too, if we're going to be looking at, at the iPads.
I agree.
It's really, it's an app. And the, the ones that I use are probably 99 cents that, that you can use to markup a PDF or a document or, or do the hyperlinks and that sort of thing. As far as the plan size, it's not the size, it's the resolution so that when you do zoom in, you can, you can see it. I mean, the, the detail is there.
Mr. Clark, it seems a couple of, three years ago, we tried something along those lines with the city council. And I know you used it for a couple times. How did it work out?
I, I went back to the, the printed version, and I had a couple of problems. One is, as Paul was mentioning, flipping back and forth between items. The way we had it set up, they were all in a Dropbox. And so if I wanted to open another item, I had to go to the Dropbox and open it and close the one that I was looking at, which was inconvenient. The other thing is I tend to write notes on the staff reports. And if you write the note, you just get a little icon, and then you have to choose whether to have the icon opened or the report opened. And so I found that while I'm talking, thinking, listening, and trying to read all at the same time, it was just, you know, if I was chewing gum, it would have been dead. But, but I think, you know, maybe, maybe there's, there are things to learn and, and other apps to use that weren't available at that time.
You know, if I may, I, I find the advantage of the iPad being more associated with the plans, actual physical plans, or being able to go to Google Earth and look at that property and get a really good idea of what we're talking about versus this type of thing. I, I can't see us replacing, personally, I kind of agree. I have notes scribbled all over this and it'd be a little more difficult with the iPad. But, so I guess I'm thinking hybrid. You know, but the real use for me personally would be in actually looking at plans, going from one to three to four to, you know, whatever, and have that versatility.
Mayor, trouble, if I may. I would be forward seeing if we could purchase iPads for the commissioners if they wish to. And like council member Blatt said, if we could look for software applications to really help them out. Mike, another question I have is, so the agenda goes out a week before the scheduled meeting. Is that correct? When do the actual items go on the internet? Could it be also done at the same time as the agenda?
Yeah, we, we post pretty much at the same time.
Pretty much. So, so either way, regardless if they had an iPad or not, they could just go to their, or, or they could go online and, and open those items.
That's right.
Okay.
Madam Mayor? So we're talking just the planning commission at this point, right? Because if we were due to all the commissioner, with all commissions, including council, would be, I'm being the businesswoman here, sorry, would run about 26,000 with, before taxes. So I think we also have to, and if we have to recognize that, we want to keep that in mind about what it is, where we want to spend our money. And we have a budget for the year and.
Yeah, I, I don't think we have to implement it with all the commissions and the council all at once.
Well, I don't.
You know, let, if the commission's interested in doing it and we, we, through the budget, have the money to do it, we could do it with the commission and see how it goes for a year. And if someone else wanted to do it, consider that.
And I'm with Commissioner Foster. I, I prefer the hard copies. I think council kind of rejected the whole internet thing, too, because we all want to, we always flipping back and forth and scrolling all over everything.
I was actually envisioning that the iPads would, I don't know if they would stay or we'd have them for a week and then we'd turn them in. And then the next commission, can you, I mean, I know we kind of rotate weeks as to which commission is meeting. So in other words, they would be shared. I mean, that would have to be looked at, but that would, yeah, that was my original thought, rather than buying one for each person. But that's another idea.
Perhaps the planning commission can take another look at this and come up with a plan for a pilot project. And if the planning commission is willing to pursue this, then maybe we can, you know, work out, maybe we don't need to buy iPads for each commissioner. Maybe those of you that have yours could use, to see if this is something that would work. So maybe if you could put it on your agenda, come up with a solid plan, give it to Rob. Any other comments or questions from the commissioners or council? Any members of the public wish to speak on this? Okay, then that concludes our agenda. I just wanted to note two things. One, January the 29th is the housing element workshop, and that's a joint meeting between the building appeals board and the planning commission.
What night of the week is that?
It's Wednesday.
Wednesday?
So that's January 29th. And just a reminder that February 5th will be a workshop regarding height limits and solar access, February 5th. Any other business, any further business? Meeting adjourned.